I'll call this meeting to order. If you're able to, please stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Scott. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Dana. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the agenda passes. And that fast, we're on high school leadership. Tonight, we have the teacher herself, Lori Hogan. Welcome.
Are they gone for spring break already?
No, not yet. So many of them are in athletics and we're actually in a changeover in the leadership class right now during the break week. So I am here tonight to do the final group for the 18-19 officers. So I thought tonight would be a good night for me to do it. They're all at sports. So the first item that I want to share with you tonight, and the picture's behind me, is our teas and tiaras event. We open that up to DK through third grade girls to come into the building and dress like princesses. And we had crafts and activities and even Prince William giving them a ring. And we had a photo booth and all kinds of fun activities that night. We had about 35 girls from all over the district attend that evening, and so it was really well received. And the girls all said, Mrs. Hogan, why do the parents stay? I said, remember, these little girls are four and five and six years old. So it's a great way to bring young families into our building and get to show the neat things that go on at Lake Orion High School. And that evening, ironically, with the marching band was also practicing in the commons. So they got to walk into the band playing. And we actually had the event in our staff lounge. So that was a new venue for most of our community members that had never been there. So it was really successful. A lot of great compliments. The kids did a great job.
That's awesome.
So that was teas and tiaras. And then I think our next slide is some photos from our charity volleyball game. Am I the slide clicker? Yes. So on Sunday night, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, we had the Shamrock Showdown. And it was about six teams, all of which participated in our charity week. They each paid to play. And we gave all the money to the charity, which I'll get to in a minute. But ironically, our very aggressive staff team lost to the Friends of the Lake Orion Varsity Volleyball Team. So, well, it wasn't the whole volleyball team, but a couple of the girls got a team together with some of their friends, which was really fun. And they beat the staff team. And the staff was not happy about that, but they survived. It was a really fun night that night. It lasted about two hours. We had lots of people playing volleyball at the high school on Sunday night, all as part of our kickoff to charity week. Our next slide has some pictures from our Coin Stalls event. And I want to tell you a little bit about Coin Stalls because this year, we were fortunate enough to have PNC Bank come in and help us. They sent a teller and the branch manager here, Ryan, who is now a dear friend of mine because he spent so much time in my classroom that day. And then one of their corporate office members from the corporate office down in Troy. And so these are some small pictures of the Coin Stall event. We don't have tallies yet, but we spent about four hours counting loose coin that day. And we took two trips to PNC. And we're looking forward to soon being able to share with you a dollar amount that, of course, will all go to our Leader Dogs charity as part of our charity week donations this year. So that was Tuesday, the 19th. On the evening of Wednesday, the 20th, we had our Mr. and Mrs. LO competition. So that was the first that we had added the female counterpart to that. Although we only had seven participants, we did raise almost $2,000. And I will credit that to the seven participants and the team of leadership kids that put on that event that evening. The candidates are required the week prior to the competition to raise as much money as they can individually. And then that's part of their tally score to win the title of Mr. and Mrs. LO. So a fun little event and a nice twist this year, adding in the female part. So we had fun with that. The biggest hit of the season at LOHS, the donut truck. Unexpectedly and kind of a nice surprise, I was at OA meeting in Rochester about three weeks ago, and they had this nice little donut truck parked out front. And I said, my goodness, tell me about this. So we were lucky enough to get ahold of the owners of the Little Donut Factory, which are a local family. And they parked out in front of LOHS on Wednesday for the delayed start at the high school and had a very successful morning. So successful, we brought them back on Thursday all day. So they parked out front. They were ready to sell at 7:00 a.m. And we sold donuts all day and the profits, all of which are going back to our Leader Dogs for the Blind charity. So it was really a neat little opportunity and some of the best donuts you've ever had in your life. And the neat thing was the smell kind of permeated throughout the commons. So it smelled like fresh donuts all day. Huge hit. Lots of good Twitter pictures on the Little Donut Factory. So we're looking forward to working with them again. And I think my next slide is our senior bidding and our food raffles. And of course, we had the dogs in the building this week. So it was really neat to have the opportunity. We bid off Shamrock shakes and donations from BW3s and Italian Gardens and Jets Pizza and G's Bizzaria. So we raffled those off during lunch and the kids end up spending like $10 for a Shamrock shake. Of course, the profits of which go to Leader Dogs. And then we did have the puppies in the building, which was a big hit, really neat. And then our senior bids, our staff are able to purchase a senior helper for a day to clean out closets and to do tasks around the building. Our Safe Ed team has purchased a couple seniors to run passes. And Mr. Holly, our principal, has purchased a senior to work for him for the day. So that's going to be something that'll be coming up fourth quarter, but the profits from that, all as part of our charity week donation.
How much does a senior go for?
Well, some of the seniors went for $35. Those are the big bids. And some of them a little bit less, but we were thrilled, you know, because it's 100% profit for the charity. So we're really excited about that. And then our final piece tonight is our, last weekend, myself and Amy Redman attended the State Student Council Conference in Grand Rapids, sponsored by the Michigan Association of Student Councils and Honor Societies. We took 25 ladies with us this weekend and had an excellent time learning from other schools around the state. There were over 100 schools in attendance, mainly from Oakland and Macomb counties. So that's neat to be able to network a little bit locally with our peers. We were able to bring home three major awards that we were very excited about. The Star School Award, which is a culmination of points you've received throughout this school year to earn that honor. The Exceptional Service Project, which we submitted our middle school leadership conference for. And we're one of 15 schools to receive that award. And then our final and probably our most important award was the Award of Excellence. And there are 30 schools throughout the state receiving this award, only three leadership classes. And we were one of the three to receive the Award of Excellence in the state of Michigan for our work as a leadership class at Lake Orion High School. So very excited to bring home some hardware from the State Student Council Conference this weekend.
Well, congratulations on that. That's outstanding.
Sure. We have amazing kids and we are very glad to show them off. So it's very fun for us as advisors.
So anybody got questions for Lori? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And we look forward to getting a nice big tally coming soon to tell you what we're going to be able to donate to Leader Dogs.
We look forward to hearing it.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I know you're changing leadership. So at our next board meeting, will it be the new leadership that will be coming? Okay.
I'm hoping to attend and introduce you to the five new officers that the students will have elected if they can all make it that night. But we'll definitely have some names and faces that'll be new.
Great.
So thank you.
Thanks, Lori. And after that, we get to hear all about our good news.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to start, there's been a lot of good news, so kind of go through fast. This is the art, there's been so many art awards and it's hard, tough to choose. I mean, this is the season and our students are so talented. And this is just one, one group of art awards that, you know, they're going to go on to the, there's another level. You can see the Michigan Youth Arts Festival in May, but Melissa Wilson at the high school does such a wonderful job. And these students are so talented that every couple days, she's sending us more awards that they're winning. And it's just, it's really exciting. And we try to put them on the website so that everyone can see and all the different art achievements by our high school students. This is what happened last week, World Down Syndrome Day. And a number of our schools participated, you know, they had unique socks and that was kind of the theme of the day. And I think it is across the country, around the world. And I think that it's really something that unified a lot. It drew attention to a part of our population that, you know, deserves it. And we were excited to, that all of our, a number of our schools all did different things and they were all of different intensities. But like, if you look at the pictures from like Oakview, they all laid down and they all had their socks in a big circle and stuff like that. And it was really great. So the charity basketball game, Special Olympics Charity Basketball Game between Oxford and Lake Orion happens twice. The first one was at Oxford. The second one was a couple weeks ago, just after our meeting at Lake Orion and won again. If you guys can go back and find the drag and broadcasting, you follow them. DeShawn Gallimore, who is one of the faces students, if you go and look, he had this stretch where he was on fire. He scored like 10, 15 points.
Last two minutes of the game.
Yeah. And everyone mobbed him and everything. It was really a cool moment. So those highlights are out there. This is, you know, we do, we talk about some of the sports, but this is something that I wanted to highlight because I, they noticed, the hockey team, you know, this is for them being academic all-state. And we talk about the successes our teams have in the state tournaments and everything, but the idea that we can focus on the academics and they're being recognized for that as well is something that we don't want to lose sight of that. We've had, this is, we're approaching the end of March's reading month and a lot of you have participated and our administrators have all participated. And there's Rick reading and there's Dana reading as well. So it's really nice and our principals and our staff members have been really good about sharing all those things. Actually, tomorrow, we're going to have State Senator Rosemary Bayer in the district to read to some students as well, which is really exciting and we're glad for that. This is Niko Valodi. He placed third in this research for the Business Professionals of America Conference. And now he gets to go on to the national conference, which is a high school event that, you know, it's a rare, it's not something that happens every year. So it's exciting that he was so successful. Our kindergarten registration was a big day and our secretaries, elementary secretaries are so good at handling this. And Allison Doan from Central Enrollment was there. Everything happened so efficiently that day. Everyone, they came, you know, obviously, as we all know, CERC is not the easiest place to get into and find out where you're going, but no one had problems. People went to the back door. We did a lot of promotion for it. People knew where to go and they knew they didn't need appointments and they went right down. And there was a long line. And when I got there and they were about to start, there was a long line all the way down the hall. People flowed through. They found what they needed to do and they got through there. And it was great. So I think that's a testament to Allison and Central Enrollment and the elementary secretaries. Lori talked about the donuts, which I thought was really interesting. And so our office partook in those as well.
Thank you, Mark.
Were they good?
They were delicious.
As soon as someone mentioned.
They were warm. They were little round cinnamon donuts.
You could send a text to the board members.
Well, we're going to give Kyle Medier, the associate principal of the high school, because he tweeted it. And I said, oh, that's a tweet. So I went right out the door. Just in time. There was actually kids still in line when school starting, so they had to cut off the line. That's why they came back the next day, which was really nice for those kids. We had our support staff of the year, Chris Hafner. She works in food service at Scripps Middle School. She was totally overwhelmed and surprised when, you know, Dan Haas, the principal at Scripps, surprised her with this and she'll go on to the county level as well. She's worked for us for 21, she's in her 21st year. This is the last year. She's going to retire. And she was, the other people in her department, the things that they wrote about her, she actually has gone on and made so many efforts to clean things beyond, above and beyond. And Rick, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I have to share this. So in her nomination, her supervisor indicated that she had to tell her that it was not necessary to go outside and scrub the trash, the garbage dumpsters outdoors, that nobody does that.
That dedication.
She was great. And she said, you know, when we talked to her at that day, she just, she said that she just wants to do things to make it the best experience for the kids. And that's going above and beyond her job, which is something that we obviously appreciate and what's what made her worthy of that award. Speaking of awards, we wanted to thank, congratulate Burgett for earning an award from the School Board Association. You know, and this Master Diamond Award is a really high award. So, you know, we were really glad to see that you received that. That was nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Battle of the Books, we hear a lot about the Battle of the Books at the middle school, and that's something that's gone on for a couple of years. They had one last weekend in terms of the elementaries and the sponsored by the library. And the library played a great role in that. So that was very exciting as well. Our robotics is, we talk about robotics every time because it's such a great program. Last weekend, they went to a competition. They won the chairman's award. And two of the, two of the students got scholarships to Kettering University, which was really a major achievement as well. The Pine Tree, Marion went to the First Pine Tree Center concert and the students sang a number of songs. It was really a nice event. And there was a number of parents there as well. And they were very proud of themselves. Mr. Cooper, Dakota Cooper, who's our music chair for the district, he had worked with them for months. He's worked with them since the beginning of the year and they were all very proud at the, to have the opportunity to do a concert like, you know, a lot of other schools do as well. What happened there? The senior interviews have gone on and they just, they're just concluded now, but they've gone on at the high school. And I'm sure you're all aware of this program. And community members come in, which is one of the great parts of it. Because, and I was able to sit in for the first time this year. And the community members sit there and the kids present and they, I was so impressed with the kids and, you know, their foresight, what they look forward to, what they have, what they've experienced in our schools, which is great, but also their vision going forward, which is really nice. And this is something we found out about this week, that two of our transportation employees earned excellence awards from Oakland schools and they'll be honored at a banquet later this, on May 17th, I believe. And the one thing that I just found out about today, a high school student named Adam Tisch scored 36, a perfect score on the ACT, which is really impressive. And the high school posted about that today. So that was really exciting. So thank you. Any questions?
Well, thank you. We appreciate all the good news. And while you're up there, is there a communications update?
I think we're still moving forward with the, for those of you who attended the state of the township today, we had a great ON TV helped and Marion and Andrea Brooks' presentation to the students. We gave her, it was a really nice that we were able to share with the district, I mean, share with the township, you know, what our district is doing. And I think that, I mean, Marion.
I was going to talk about that, too.
Okay.
That's okay.
So you can. So thank you very much.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mark. And next, we have public participation and no one signed up for that. So that moves us right into the strategic areas of discussion. Governance, starting with superintendent update.
I'll hold off on policy for a while.
It's looming.
It's just too heavy to deal with right now. I'll start off with just a few things. One, Mark just talked about the state of the township, which was at the Woodside Church today. So it was good information that we gathered and I thought our presentation was well-received and gave people the information about our STEM program. And I wanted to credit Mr. Weedman. I used my new mantra, first, best and only about our STEM program. So that was good. Rosemary Bayer is coming tomorrow and she'll be here at 1:00. I think you all know.
It doesn't snow.
I know. Yeah, last time was snow. The second one was a medical issue that her family had. So she'll be here meeting with us first. So you're welcome to attend. It's just going to be an informal conversation. Burgett's Award, congratulations for that. Oh, the high school, were you going to talk about that? But it's all day tomorrow?
It is all day tomorrow.
It was supposed to be half-day Thursday and Friday with the snow days.
Their finals.
It's going to be all day. Elementary Middle is what, half-day Friday?
Friday.
Just want to make sure everybody knows that. And that's it.
Okay. Well, then that does take us right into the Policy Committee report. Who is the guy?
Mr. Singer.
I thought it's Jake's time to shine.
It is.
There's only 346 pages of policy in this.
Okay. So the Policy Committee met on Tuesday, March 19th in your packets, which is the same material as the public can see through the board meeting agenda links on the LOCS website. There are policies covering about 300 pages, which contain some type of update. Not all the pages have an update. As you know, we use an outside firm, Neola, to help us stay on top of policy issues. In the packet, before the policy proposals, there's a summary from Neola giving the background of why the changes were required or recommended. Much of the volume related to these changes came from laws requiring school districts to name compliance officers in the areas of anti-harassment, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, nondiscrimination and equal access to education. There is similar information being added to several policies related to naming the compliance officers and their corresponding record retention requirements. This is because there are separate anti-harassment policies, which cover both employees and students, and separate policies covering different classifications of employees. The Policy Committee agreed with Neola's recommendation to name both a female and a male compliance officer to provide complainants with the option to report their concerns to an individual of the gender with which they may feel most comfortable. The administration recommends that we name Heidi Mercer and Rick Arnett wherever compliance officers are required. There were several other small changes to policies in the packet, which are too numerous to be discussed individually. To summarize those, most broadly fall into the following categories. One, items that are absolutely required by recent changes in federal or state law. Two, items recommended by our service provider, Neola, to help our policies be more clear given changes to regulations or the current state of the times. For instance, electronic communications and social media. And third, items that are still being caught up from the period when LOCS was not a client of Neola. This is a first reading. The plan is to bring these back for a second read and vote on adopting them at the first board meeting in April. So with that, we can open it up to questions or comments.
May I add one issue that, to, which will really be a change in the second reading? Or were you going to bring that up?
No, go first.
Okay. If you would look at page one, I think that's the sixth on that line, 162 in your packet. This policy is 3120 and it is about employment of professional staff. And if you look on the, in your packet, we would like to recommend from the committee, I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, a change for second reading. And on the second page, page two of five, it would be, you see those little bracket things? One, two, three, the fourth bracket should be eliminated.
In the section of relatives to staff members.
Staff members.
And then that, that bracket or the entire next?
The second one. The board will not employ but may reemploy. That would not, it does, it would appear probably on your copy that was in the board packet as being accepted. And I believe the committee recommendation is that that be eliminated from policy.
Yes, we had, on, what it, there was a, there's a policy that says relative of board members may be employed by the board, provided the board member does not participate in any way in the discussion or vote on the employment when a conflict of interest is involved. There is also a policy that was, that's in our policies, that says the board will not employ but may reemploy the children, siblings, spouses, parents, in-laws, or bona fide dependents IRS criteria of a board member. Those two directly contradict. So the committee discussed and said, we've been living by the first one, where relatives of board members may be employed, but that, but the board member must recuse himself from any vote related to the conditions of that employment. So we just wanted to clean it up and make sure that we're saying what we do and doing what we say.
Good. So for second reading, that paragraph.
Will eliminate those.
Will be eliminated, okay? That was all I had for a change.
Does anyone else have any comments about all that fun reading, policy reading? Jim?
Yeah, I had a question. My computer just went black.
Of course.
The council for Neola had some advisories in there. And one was related to weapons in school. And there was a reference to two policies in there. And I wondered if those two policies were policies that were currently in place for us.
You don't remember the number, Jim?
Green.
Oh, the green sheet.
19, I believe. Kind of went black on me here.
Keep in mind that this particular gigantic packet is really things that were in place before with just the changes that were made during the period that Jake mentioned, which was kind of our hiatus from Neola. So if it's in there, I think it was in there before.
Well, it says.
Which one is it?
It says, what does this mean for Michigan school districts? It means that districts may adopt the optional language in Neola policies, 7217 and 8400 banning guns on their property and at school events, subject to the exceptions contained in those policies. And I don't recall us discussing a policy where we had exceptions on weapons.
I think it was just police.
Yeah. We never did, no.
Well, that, I don't even think that needs to be in the policy though, does it? Because I don't think we can restrict law enforcement from carrying their weapon.
Would you like me to pull the policy?
What was the number you said? Seventeen?
It's Neola policy, 7217 and 8400.
Now neither one of those are in this.
We could, just for the next reading.
We'll look at it. I'll take it to the committee.
Yeah.
Okay. 7217 and 8400. We'll look at it.
Okay, thanks.
provided the board member does not participate in any way in the discussion or vote on the employment when a conflict of interest is involved. There is also a policy that was, that's in our policies, that says the board will not employ, but may re-employ the children, siblings, spouses, parents, in-laws, or bona fide dependents IRS criteria of a board member. Those two directly contradict, so the committee discussed and said, we've been living by the first one, where relatives of board members may be employed, but that, but the board member must recuse themselves from any vote related to the conditions of that employment. So we just wanted to clean it up and make sure that we're saying what we do and doing what we say.
Good. So for second reading, that paragraph-
Will eliminate those.
Will be eliminated, okay? That was all I had for a change.
Does anyone else have any comments about all that fun reading, policy reading? Jim?
Yeah, I had a question, and my computer just went black.
Of course.
The council for Neola had some advisories in there. And one was related to weapons in school. And there was a reference to two policies in there. And I wondered if those two policies were policies that were currently in place for us.
You don't remember the number, Jim? Oh, the green sheet.
Kinda went black on me here.
Keep in mind that this particular gigantic packet is really things that were in place before, with just the changes that were made during the period that Jake mentioned, which was kind of our hiatus from Neola. So if it's in there, I think it was in there before.
Well, it says-
Which one is it?
It says, what does this mean for Michigan school districts? It means that districts may adopt the optional language in Neola policies, 7217 and 8400 banning guns on their property, and at school events, subject to the exceptions contained in those policies. And I don't recall us discussing a policy where we had exceptions on weapons.
I think it was just police.
Yeah, we never did, no.
Well, that, I don't even think that needs to be in the policy, though, does it? Because I don't think we can restrict law enforcement from carrying their weapon.
We've talked about-
What was the number you said, 17?
7217.
It's Neola policy, 7217 and 8400.
Now, neither one of those are in this-
Well, no, I think just, we could, just for the next reading-
We'll look at it. I'll take it to the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, 7217 and 8400. We'll look at it.
Okay, thanks.
As I was reading through all of these, I noticed, couldn't help but notice how many of them are still so lengthy and cumbersome. You know, it's, again, a lot of administrative guidelines within the policy. And there's a lot, I noticed, of expectation on the federal level regarding Title I, that our district has, I know that we're, we have to accept it, but I just want people to be aware that there is a lot of expectation on our administration, administration and staff to comply with federal regulations. And it's just getting more and more cumbersome for, I think, our staff to comply with that, all the while getting your funding cut. So I just wanted to kind of say that out loud.
Yeah, thank you.
It screamed at me as I was going through this, like, oh, gosh, another thing that you guys have to do.
The Title I policy was one that you had brought to my attention.
Yeah.
And when Heidi and I looked at it, it is very cumbersome, but it, we were audited by our Title I, and we have to do it, so.
Right. That's a lot of work, right here, what's going on. So, thank you for all that you have added onto your already busy schedules, for stepping up to the plate. And we'd be remiss if we didn't thank Julie for all the work she had in this, because this was a particular, a lot of work for her to get us caught up with where we should be on the computer and on the, to making sure our policy was in line with what Neola and what the committee was doing. So thank you, thank you, Julie, for all of that. That was, I know it was a lot of work for you.
Before you leave my section-
Okay.
I did have one other thing, and I almost forgot it. There is legislation, it is on cyberbullying, that went into effect, actually, today or this week. It went today into effect. And this is an old House bill, 5017. And it's one about, quite extensive, about what happens with cyberbullying. And there's a very hefty fine for the first offense, and it can be punishable up to 10 years in prison.
Jail time.
So we have alerted our families. Did that go out today, Mark? Okay. Alerted our families to remind their children the seriousness of cyberbullying.
It's a big deal.
Mm-hmm. So I almost forgot that.
I'm glad you remembered. All right, and that winds up the governance section with the Board Self-Assessment Committee, of which we have nothing new to report, but we do need to plan a meeting for April. So when we, when we come around to next week, maybe we could send out a doodle poll. Thank you. So, moving right along to student achievement, the assistant superintendent's update.
Okay. First this evening, I wanna pass out, right after break, we have, we enter into our state testing. So this is just a testing schedule for your information. We are ready to begin this testing. And I also wanted to point out that the state did end up extending the testing schedule because of all of the snow days. And, you know, it's really not that big of a deal. I mean, it is something that they probably should have done, so while we thank them, you know.
It doesn't affect us.
No.
So, but you're not taking, you're not doing that, right?
No.
So for the districts that are choosing to be in that extension timeframe, that also affects when they'll get their results back, is that true?
Who knows?
I never comment on results.
I just saw articles on that.
Well, I can assure you that it probably will be stated that, you know, extension, the results are a little bit late. Now, that I would put my mind on. But anyway, that's just for your information, that we will be entering into that busy springtime for a lot of our students and teachers. Also, I know that the last board meeting, you enjoyed the presentation that was done by Stadium. So we are looking at some future presentations for some upcoming board meetings, some things that we would like to show off, so I am working on that for you. And then, this past week, at our leadership meeting with all of the principals, I don't know if any of you know him, but Dr. Jay Marks from Oakland Schools, who's a consultant there, spent some time with our principals. And we talked about how we could further support our African, African-American males. And so that was a great presentation. And I think we have, have some things to learn there. But we have certainly, certainly opened the doors, I think, to, you know, studying more of that, especially with Jay Marks. So we will continue that work, but it was an excellent professional development. Then, today, all of the, well, I shouldn't say all, but several of the bond design committees did meet. And so we started off with early childhood. We have finished our tours, and so that has been fun. We had quite a few days of tours in quite a few buildings. And so that group is continuing their discussions on what are the things that we like and what are the things that, well, we don't necessarily like. And so we'll be wrapping up, hopefully, with those discussions next time. STEM also met today. We started discussions on what we find are successes with this program. And we'll continue that discussion with what are some of our challenges and what are some of our goals with that programming. And that was a really good discussion today. Carpenter also met. We looked at site maps. We talked about traffic flow issues and parking. And so we were busy there. And then we finished up with the furniture committee meeting. And again, we talked about some of the successes, challenges, and goals of our current classroom environment. So, again, I think a very productive day. All of these teams are working very well, and it's, it's a lot of fun to meet with them. So, we are making progress. But some of these discussions, obviously, are very, very important, especially for Tom, the architect, to hear, so that, you know, they're able to bring us some plans that I think directly meet our needs. So, that's it.
Awesome. Any questions for Heidi?
I just wanna say a couple things. The design committee has been just an absolute, it's been really great and fun to be on, but also it's a great responsibility for the future of our district. And I think that you've handled it really well, Heidi, organizing. I know it's, I'm just on one committee, so I can't even imagine, like, the scope of all of it, you know? And our architects have been great to work with. I also wanted to mention, I, and we may have talked about it the last meeting, but I really enjoyed having the presentation from Stadium. So if there's any way we can start having more, you know, more presentations, I would, that would mean a lot, because we get to see things that we don't normally get to see, and they get to share.
I couldn't get anybody to take the April 10th one.
Well, I know. I mean, this week and the next one, it's a little rough, because people are gearing up and we need after-
Yes, I've already, I've already got two that I'm, yeah, I'm working on.
Show off all the good stuff.
Oh, I've got some things to show off.
We got lots of good stuff to show off. Thank you.
Well, just keep your mic there, Dana, because we're gonna do the curriculum committee report, I think.
Yes, curriculum committee met. I can't remember, was it last Friday or the Friday before?
Yes, yes.
Last Friday, okay. They're all kind of running together. And I'm gonna, we talked about lots of really exciting things and some of new concepts that were shared with us for the first time. So I'm not gonna read the minutes exactly, but some things I am gonna read verbatim, just to make sure that you're getting the correct information. The first thing that Heidi talked about is something really exciting called Dragon University. The teaching and learning department is working on the development of classes that may be taken by teachers to earn their credits toward an MA plus 15 or an MA plus 30. These classes would target teachers that do not wish to enroll in a university program, but like to earn credits to advance on the salary schedule. So basically, right now, teachers, if they want to advance on the salary schedule, they can take classes, they can take online classes and those types of things. What this is gonna allow is for us to have some programming that meets the needs of our district. And then, you know, it's always a crunch for time with teachers, because they're trying to balance everything out and take classes, so we can, you know, work with that and that type of thing. So there's lots of logistics that still need to be worked out, but it's a really exciting concept. And so kudos to the teaching and learning department. The other thing we talked about is developmental kindergarten. We're still screening students to make sure that the right students are in developmental kindergarten. And the great news is that every room is gonna have a teacher assistant next year. So there'll be help with the little ones, which I'm sure the teachers are really excited about. Mindfulness, which I think this is so important. This has been brought to our district. We have Stephanie Harris from Oakview. And Marcy, can you help me with the last name?
Nowatzek.
Nowatzek, thank you. I don't wanna get it wrong. They, they kind of spearheaded the initiative in our district, and now we're taking it out to the principals. So all the principals will get a PD in April. And then Steve Hawley is working on a plan for an initiative at the high school next year. So this is a really critical need that's gonna help our students become more well-rounded and be able to focus on the academics, because we're able to help them with their social, emotional thing. So I'm really excited about this, and I said, any help or support that you need, I'm all on board. So I appreciate you bringing that to the forefront. Technology, the current focus is on staff devices. And the whole staff, survey's been sent out to the staff right now, so that's kind of where that sits. And then another new exciting thing is, next year, we're gonna do a pilot at the high school for flex time for the students. And what this means is they're gonna take a small group of seniors, and they're gonna allow them to start at 9:00 and get out at 4:00. And so I don't know if you wanna talk, give a little bit more details about that, Heidi?
Yeah. This is something that we have talked about for several years and that we have really wanted to do. I don't need to tell you that all of the research clearly shows that our, our students at that age need to be able to start a little bit later. Most districts, you will find, start, usually go at the high school and just go full bore and start everybody later. I really didn't wanna do that here. I think that students need to have choice. We do have some students that do have jobs and things like that, so they need to get out a little bit earlier, so they need to start earlier. So we're gonna try to approach it a little bit different here in Lake Orion and offer students a choice. With that, you also know that we have a very unique schedule with a modified block, so we have a lot of different moving parts and pieces. So next fall, I'm working with Steve. We're gonna start with a very small senior pilot of volunteer students that would start school approximately at 9:00 and get out approximately at 4:00. And we're looking, looking at targeting the required class of personal finance, so that would be pretty easy. And then we're gonna see how it goes from there. Hopefully, the following year, we'd grow it a little bit bigger. And then by the third year, you know, depending upon how things go, it would be offered for all students at the high school. But I'm really very excited about this initiative and this pilot. Like I said, it's been something that we've been talking about for several years and really wanting to do. And so we're gonna make it happen and see how it works.
Yeah, so that wraps up my report from the curriculum committee, so I'll hit it back to you, Burgett. Thank you, Heidi.
Awesome. Good job, Dana. We got-
Will it be a rotating group, or the same group that you're looking to pilot the whole year?
Depending upon, we don't know as of yet. We think we're gonna target from 30 to 60 students. It could be two different groups, you know, rotating throughout the year. Down the road, what we would like to be able to do is, you know, some students, for instance, say a football player. In the fall, it may not work for them to start later. However, in the spring, it may, you know? So again, even allowing students to flex even within the school year by term. So the whole key through here is the more flexibility, the better. But that's also a little bit trickier to achieve, especially with our modified block and so many pieces that we have in our schedule. But we do think, we, we think that it is doable. So now we're gonna, we're gonna put it to the test, a small test, and then grow it from there.
What this does is it breaks this notion that we are so restricted by the concept of time in schools. And this really starts to break that whole thing. So the pattern is first, best, and only.
And I did wanna say, as far as staff, so I think the idea, Heidi, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they also have a toggled schedule.
Yes.
So they're not working overtime or nothing like that. They would just also start.
They would perhaps as well.
That teacher.
Yes, correct. And then regarding the Dragon University, that is something that we're really excited about. In fact, Mark is working already on a communication that will go out to staff right after break. And then HR and teaching and learning are working on, you know, developing some of the courses, looking at some of the opportunities that are already developed that we may pull in. And then, you know, looking at how we're gonna track all of that information. So, but again, I think that that's a, it's definitely a win-win for the district and a, and very advantageous as well for staff, so.
Would those meet any coursework that they need in terms of state certification?
Yes, they could, yes, because we would be applying for sketches, which that's what they use toward their state, yes, renewal as well. So it would also be something that would be a little bit of a revenue for the district. Because obviously, the classes that we develop, we would have to have somebody develop that class as well as teach that class. So we're not looking to make, you know, big, big dollars from it, but it certainly is gonna be-
John disagrees.
It certainly is gonna be a stream of revenue.
But it also is going to be cheaper than what they would have to pay if they were enrolled in a university. So it's an advantage also for the staff members as well.
Yep.
Were you gonna add something to that, Rick?
Well, and I think it's important to note, too, this is for those individuals who have attained that master's degree. And to go beyond your master's degree in public education, there's really only a couple of options. One is to work towards that PhD. Or the other, the next step many of us have gone through is the ed specialist. But that is strictly related to those who are interested in moving into administration. And not, not everyone is interested in going down that road. So those individuals struggle to find learning opportunities that meet a need. So in working with the union and listening to input from folks, we're gonna try to be first, best, and only in this regard and see what happens.
If any of you would like to teach a course, develop a course, let me know.
But I was also thinking, if we're brainstorming here at this table, we could open this up to other school districts.
Yes, yes.
This could be a huge revenue source, especially if we charge the other districts more.
The only issue there would be if the other issues accepted those as viable.
But if it's sketchy, it's continually, it's continually add.
Yes.
Right.
Stay tuned.
Well, I just wanna say, I think it's remarkable that, on the student end, that we're considering actually piloting another option of flexibility. Lots of people have been talking about this for a long time, and we've already got the blended class options, there's already online options. And now that we're talking about flex time, I'm just proud of our district for taking a step out there and seeing, well, how can we make this work? Trying to, I hate to say the word customer service, but in some instances, that's what it's all about. And it's, it's a new, it's a brave new world in education. And I appreciate your initiative in going forward with this, Heidi. Thanks. So the LAMP A Learning Committee report, Dana and Julie?
Okay, I'll kind of give an overview, but if I miss anything, let me know. So we also met last Friday. It was a busy day for me, you know. A couple things, LAMP A Learning, it is scholarship season, and so we did talk about that. And next time we meet, I think we'll probably, well, the scholarship, we give out several different scholarships. And so we talked about if we had the money to fund these, and we are low in funds this year. So that also led to a discussion in how we can fundraise so we can sponsor the program, not just in these scholarships, but this program runs from middle school through high school. And so to protect the integrity of the program, we really need to have a good financial source. And part of that is for the scholarships. And so the students will be notified soon, I don't know how soon, to apply for the scholarships. Okay, if they approve it, okay. And then we'll award those on senior night. So we talked about different fundraising opportunities. We kind of adjusted the schedule for the payout, or how much we're gonna pay out for the scholarships. And then for middle school, we've been doing awards if you have a 3.5, and we've bumped that up now to a 3.8, because with our standards-based grading, some things have changed. So Julie, did I miss anything?
I think just to make sure that there's consensus or support overall from the board with the GPA recommendation from administration. Our numbers have gone for those middle school kids almost 10% since we've been doing it standard-based. And so it will help realign back down to what it used to be before we did that. That's why the recommendation is being made. And then the scholarships, you know, we are, we're actually awarding a little more than what we have in the budget, but they don't get paid out until the fall, so we have opportunity in the summer to do that next campaign and get some of those funds back in to help replenish for that payout. So we were somewhat comfortable recommending this opportunity.
We did have to cut some of the amount that we give for each scholarship, but we did- we did feel comfortable that we could raise that money. Of course, we're always looking for fundraising suggestions. You know, this is, um, a whole board of education. This is what we do for our district and so it does lie on us to, um, to fund this and to promote this. And this is a really important program. When I recently, this week, did the senior interviews and, I mean, all the students had that as part of their portfolio, that they've been in Lamp of Learning. So this is something really important and we need to remember, this is a middle school through high school program. Um, and I really want to thank Julie because you do so much, I mean, you're so modest, but you do so much of the work for this committee and it really wouldn't be, we couldn't pull it off without you at all. So I want to applaud you for that and, and thank you so much.
So, um, Julie and Dana and team, am I hearing you right when I, the recommendation bringing forward from this committee is regarding the average GPA to earn Lamp of Learning honor roll is recommended now to be 3.8. And for middle school, middle school only. So we need a, a consensus to approve that. So let's have, is there discussion about that? What, what do you all think?
I'm for it.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
If it, if it aligns it appropriately, that makes sense.
Um, if I can ask a question, was there a discussion? Thank you, Scott. Was there a discussion about raising the grade point for the high school?
No, because they are not, they are not standards-based grading. It's just the middle school that has gone through the change.
And they already have the weighted because of.
Correct. The honors and AP.
Because of AP classes, so it's, it's not an issue. It hasn't been an issue in the high school.
All right, thank you.
So is there, I'm, I'm hearing a consensus? Is there anybody that?
There's a consensus, yes.
Okay. It looks like we can move forward with that. Um, and I'm also hearing that we're low on funds and, um, can, how can we involve the community in that? How can we get more involvement with that and invite?
We have a whole, we're working out a plan with that.
Okay.
As of right now.
Stay tuned, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a, we have a committee meeting, follow-up on some, uh, digital research.
We were, we're all looking into different things.
Checks can be made payable to Lake Orion Community Schools for Lamp of Learning? I'm, I'm not shy. We need help.
It's a little more comfortable, the forty, the total, um, that we would be liable for for scholarships if all of these were earned.
So on, we, so on our, the sheet that we've been handed, you, this is a rework, Dana, of the amounts. This is new. So it's the same number of scholarships and you've reworked the amounts?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have consensus to move forward with that? And they've been reworked so that we, because we're low on funds. Right. I saw some head nodding because there's consensus for this as well.
The entire committee was, um, in agreement with this.
Okay. It looks like you have the ability to move forward with the work you've done. Thank you very much. Is there anything else from the Lamp of Learning Committee this time?
Thanks, Burgett.
All right, thank you. A lot of work.
It was. It was a Friday fight.
No fighting.
I lost. I lost every fight on Friday.
Moving right along to human resources.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. First on the, the updates here is the superintendent contract. Later on the agenda, you will have an action item for the renewal of Marion's contract. Those edits are noted in the board book. Um, and I know that the evaluation committee has met and discussed those at length and is, uh, in support of those changes. Any comments or questions related to that at this time? All right. Um, school safety liaison designation, you will have, uh, an, an action item later on the agenda as well. Back during lame duck, PA Act, uh, Public Act 435 was established, which required, um, the state police to create what is called an office of school safety and also requires each school district then to appoint, uh, appoint a liaison to work with that newly-created division of the state police. And, um, so we are asking later for you to approve, uh, the, uh, designation and that person would be me. Um, so we thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Yes. Um, there are a couple of other items that the superintendent evaluation committee report. Um, I'll leave that, I think, Burgett, do you want to mention that at all? I've got a couple of other things that are.
For the process? No, I just, it's just like a work in progress.
Right, okay. Um, a couple of other things, I want to mention what, uh, kind of piggyback on Mark with kindergarten roundup. Um, we use that as our, our first gauge, um, when we try to project enrollment. We've been doing this for the last four years now. We've kept data on the number of individuals who are registered through kindergarten roundup. Um, and we've, the last two years, we've had around 250 families, uh, sign up kids on that particular day, which is just shy of about 50% of what we get for total enrollment by the start of the school year. This year, we're, uh, the kindergarten roundup is up to 295, I believe, or 293. So an increase of about 40 students. Now, it's too early to make an assessment of whether that's, you know, going to pan out the way we, we want it to, but, you know, could that be attributed to a better job of promotion this year or getting the word out? But that's our first real data collection point. So I feel like we're on target and maybe even ahead of target for next year's enrollment for kindergarten, which is good news.
Includes schools of choice.
No, that does not include schools of choice, so, yes. So that's kind of our first gauge. And then, um, lastly, uh, related to calendar, um, I'm going to bring, before you, we will, uh, we will be having a special, uh, meeting on April 11th. And I want to give you a little background prior, or 10th, excuse me, 10th, prior to the regular board meeting, kind of give you a little background on, on what this is about and why. Um, as you know, we negotiate our con, or our calendar, excuse me, with, uh, our teachers' association annually. Um, and part of that is, i- in calendar, a lot of questions are always about this whole pre-Labor Day start concept. And, and many districts have gone to the pre-Labor Day start concept. So in order to do so, you have to receive a waiver from the state of Michigan because it is, uh, part of Public Act, or the, the School Aid Act that says that you can't have a pre-Labor Day start. Three years ago, as a district, we applied for a waiver and were granted that waiver. As you know, we have not started before, uh, Labor Day in any of those three years. But we go through the process and apply to have that as an option. So when we sit down and, and do our negotiations for calendar, if we decide collectively that that's an approach we want to take for a pre-Labor Day start, we have that available to us. Our, uh, waiver expires at the end of the school year. So we are in the process of applying for a waiver for the future, for future contract negotiations, but the state of Michigan, since the time that we applied for our previous waiver, has changed the rules a little bit. And one of those changes is that we are now required to have a public hearing to talk about the pre-Labor Day start option for anyone who's interested in attending this meeting. So we will have a posted hearing prior to the April 10th board meeting. Michigan Department of Ed has a representative, it's interesting, that, uh, that's supposed to attend, but we've been informed they will attend via conference call and to be here to answer questions and so forth. And once again, we're just doing this in preparation for, in the future, we already have distributed and, and announced next year's calendar. So we will start the process, which we have on the following year, to look at our options and look at possible start dates and so forth. A lot can happen between now and then with legislation. You hear quite often that, um, there's, uh, a possibility of legislation being introduced to revoke the pre-Labor Day start and say, you know, let districts do what they want, it's a local decision. Um, so, once again, it, I, I don't want people to, to get excited or panicked or anxiety that, oh, we're talking about a pre-Labor Day start. It is in preparation to have that as an option for future negotiations of the calendar. So I can answer any questions related to that or Marion, if you want to.
Well, I just, it's just, uh, another hoop, right? We have done it in the past.
So we're just basically coming here and sitting and then we will.
It's going to be a meeting within a meeting.
Yeah, we'll put a public notice.
The board doesn't even have, oh, attend.
The board doesn't even have to attend.
Oh, okay.
This is strictly.
They recommend a board representative be available.
Okay.
Um, we have to follow the Open Meetings Act rules and, um, and, Board, you're welcome to, to join us, but.
Can we call in?
Why, well, I'm with MDE.
Is it too soon?
Go up a number of lines. Well, and that was more upsetting because I didn't realize at first, they said they had a representative here. I thought, all right, someone's going to come and, you know, all right. And then they let us know that it's going to be by conference call. So it really must be an important thing for them to do. Just another hoop.
Wow.
But we will do it.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. Anyone got anything for Rick? I just want to, um, say about your position as the, uh, safety liaison, that, let it be known, we have, we, I, once again, the state enacted something that they haven't even really enacted because there is no safety officer on the state level yet, but we're going to do our end and appoint you by the official date.
You'll see, you'll see a letter in there that we're sending to the state police and they haven't even.
They don't have.
They don't have the department or the person in charge or any of that yet, but we're required by tomorrow, by the 28th, to make this appointment.
And, um, I think you have to sign it too.
Is there like a whistle?
I don't know. A badge.
That's going to be our new crossing guard.
Crossing.
Yeah. He's going to be on the streets. We're always short.
That's awesome.
Bring a one tomorrow.
We're always short, so, crazy.
And the superintendent evaluation committee report, you've basically heard it. We've got the superintendent's contract renewal in your board packet and we're continuing to work on the process of the evaluation timeline. And with that, John, you are up for finance and operations.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your, in your board packet is, uh, the February, uh, monthly financial report. Um, a couple of quick highlights, uh, we've recognized over 42 and a half million so far this year. That's a little over 51% of our budgeted for revenue. On the expenditure side, we've recognized, um, 45.3 million or so, and that's a little over 54%. Um, the current cash position of the district is 6 million, which is good at this point in the year, particularly we're in a month, we're in, is a three payroll month, so that's our usual low point. And then June, we're still forecast to be at the 7.2 million dollar range. Um, if anyone has any questions on that, I'd be happy to, uh, can roll right into the next line item?
Please do.
Um, district fee schedule, time of year, the annual update and review, um, a couple of, uh, three, really three highlights that are on the schedule for requests to change. One's related to student parking pass cost, that's increased, that's, to my knowledge, it's not been increased for a very long time. Um, I believe this is the first increase in the last eight years that I'm, I'm aware of. Um, so that one's on the overdue side.
It's on the juniors, seniors only.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And then the, the charge that we're going to be putting in place for replacement of a lost parking pass is jumping to $25. Um, the, the rationale behind it is, um, allegedly, a pass may or may not get lost intentionally. Then $5 is paid to replace student A's pass and student B shows up with.
Two passes.
They found pass.
No.
So allegedly, so this is an attempt to make it a higher threshold and de-incentivize such practice.
I think Mr. Fitzgerald just taught them what, taught them something they may not have already been thinking about.
I was going to say. That communication was passed to me from the high schools, I'm pretty sure they got it for the answer. Um, and then in the pool area, there's a couple of select fees that are being adjusted, really to reflect the cost increase associated with staffing and, um, down in the pool area for programs. Happy to answer any questions in, in fee world. That's all I got.
Any, any comments, questions for John? I think it's pretty remarkable that, um, in this enormous list of, of the fee world, as you just said, that those are the few areas of increase. I think that's remarkable that we've kept it pretty stable.
Yeah, we have, as a district, been pretty, uh, stable and, and solid in terms of the way we've been approaching our fee base.
Very nice. Um, so we move on to the finance committee report.
No report this evening.
And how about the facility liaison report?
There's no report.
There's no report. And the bond committee report? There's no report. So there's no report. That was easy. So we're going to move all the way to action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'm trying to get there on the board.
I know, it's the policy.
I move to approve the following consent agenda items. Approved minutes from the March 13th, 2019 regular meeting.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Dana. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion to approve the consent agenda passes. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract?
Uh, move to approve the superintendent's employment agreement through June 30, 2020 as presented.
Thank you, Jim. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of approving the superintendent's contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the superintendent's contract passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution for the school safety liaison designation?
I move to adopt the resolution for designation of a school safety liaison and emergency contact to the Attorney General hotline as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any discussion? May I please have a roll call for the vote for adopting the resolution for the school safety liaison designation?
Miss the question.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weeman?
Yes.
Ms. Monarch?
Yes.
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 The motion to adopt the resolution for the school safety liaison designation passes. Congratulations officially, Rick.
Rick, congratulations. You don't know what you have to do for that.
We're worried.
It's quite extensive work, but I've kind of kept that hidden from him.
We'll bring his vest tomorrow.
Can I put letters behind my name now?
Yes, exactly.
Oh, may I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 district fee schedule?
I move to approve the district fee schedule for the 2019, 2020 year as presented.
Thank you, Dana. Is there support?
I support that.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the district fee schedule for the fiscal year 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 district fee schedule passes. And that brings us to recap the next steps.
Right, I have a couple of things. I'm going to check out policies, uh, related to weapons, 7217 and 8400, bring that back